Are we ready?
That's you, not me.
All right, yes. It's 7:30. This is the City of Brainerd City Council. Tuesday President's Birthday Edition. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett. Stengline.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
O'Day.
Here.
Stunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Bevins.
Here.
And Bedeau.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledgeable Agents.
The Pledgeable Agent Stu Blagg of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Mayor Bedeau?
I just have one item to be removed. The Community Member of the Month, we are going to postpone that until the next meeting due to snow.
Well, it did snow. That's what they did.
I'm measuring it in downtown.
Is there any other?
I did 14 times.
Adjustments to the agenda?
Hearing none, is there a move to approve?
Move to approve with the change.
Second.
Who's the second? Pritchett. Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Item five is the consent calendar. This is a notice that all matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Is there a move to adopt the consent calendar?
A move.
Motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes. That motion is adopted. The next up is item number six, which we are going to pass on till next time. And item seven is council committee reports. Seven A is personal and finance committee chairman, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eight items on the agenda tonight, and the first one is to approve quotes for the the public safety cold storage bill. The motion is to approve the quote from Lind Construction and the amount of $171,050 and to authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Lind Construction for the construction of the building, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Any discussion? Mr. Johnson?
As you'll see in the memo, we had budgeted $205,000 and the bid came in at $171,000, so we saved money on this, spent less than we expected to.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next is adjusting CSO wages, and the motion is to approve Nicholas Karsnia, Mason Barton, and Brevin Lesnar wage adjustment to $16 per hour retroactive to January 1st, 2022, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stengline, and you just got Chairman Johnson.
These were the CSOs who were already on the roster and were earning $14 an hour, but in the budget this year, we moved all CSOs to $16 an hour. So we're just making the move to these individuals who are making only 14 up to 16.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is to ratify the hiring of a new CSO, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Community Service Officer Janie Ziegler, starting at $16 with an effective date of February 16th, 2022, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Hearing none? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries, please proceed.
Mr. President, next up is ratify the hiring of a temporary special event assistant for the parks, and the motion is to ratify the hiring of Callie Bartholomew as the 2022 Temporary Special Events Assistant for the Parks Division effective February 13th, 2022, at $15 per hour, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is to ratify the hiring of the HR assistant, and the motion is to authorize the hiring of Brittany Bowser effective February 8th, 2022. Further, that should be placed on step one of the HR assistant wage grid at $23.51 per hour, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Stunick. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? That motion carries, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. The next item is to approve City Administrator Bergman's advancement to step three, and the motion is to approve City Administrator Bergman's step advancement to step three of the city administrator wage grid effective January 1st, 2022, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Stengline. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries, thank you, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. President. The next item is the resolution waiving the recertification of special assessments, and the motion is to adopt the attached proposed resolution waiving recertification of outstanding special assessment to tax forfeited parcel described as Lot 5, Block 3, Serene Pines, PID 41280507, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnson, a second by Stunick. Chairman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. You may remember, this came up last April when a neighbor asked if they could, if we would not recertify the assessments on this parcel so they could buy it to double the size of their yard essentially. And the council made a motion, hey, we should see if the developer building out in that neighborhood wants this lot to add to their development, and the developer does, and this is just a step in moving it to convey the parcel to that developer.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chair, I have one. Once this is enacting, can the neighbor bid on it? Is there an obligation to sell it to? I mean, it's a competitive market out there for dirt.
Mr. President, I think Eric could probably be better to answer that. He's here tonight.
HR Director Sharpe, can you help us with that?
Yes, Mr. President. What I would answer that is the parcel has been allowable to be purchased at any time at this point. This resolution would be allowing the this particular developer, once we entered into negotiations with them, to purchase this, not anybody else at that point.
Okay, so if anybody had wanted it up till now, it was available.
Correct, it was available over the counter.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick. Johnson.
Yep.
And Bevins.
Yes, that resolution is adopted, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our eighth and final item is an update on the request to have our funds returned from Lakes Area Media Collaborative. As you know, we mailed them a letter on August 16th, and Finance Director Hillman updated us in the Personnel and Finance Committee meeting that they have not replied to our letter yet. There is no update yet.
Thank you.
End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of other things to follow up. PNF has not taken any money, and you and Mr. Stunick have not taken any money from any seniors this week?
We have not defunded a single senior program since two weeks since our last meeting.
And as chairman of the EDA, you have not driven any businesses out of Brainerd this week?
No, but we're considering it.
I understand. I can think of one that I might be able to get rid of myself. All right. Next up is Safety and Public Works Chairman, Ms. O'Day.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had five items on our agenda tonight, first of which was a resolution whether or not to approve a cooperative agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for Streets Project 1814-08, Trunk Highway 371B, South Sixth Street Reconstruction Project. Motion coming out of committee was to recommend adopting the attached resolution which enters into the cooperative construction agreement with MINDOT for the 2022 construction of South Sixth Street, Trunk Highway 371B, from 1,000 feet south of 70th Avenue to Joseph Street, an ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, second by Erickson. Any discussion?
I can just give you the numbers. The city's portion of this project will include some of the some of the aesthetics, retaining wall, resurfacing of Greenwood Street, part of the cost of the signal at Buffalo Hills Lane, and any utility improvements, which we do have a few. The city costs would be $307,897.03. County will cover about $115,969.15, and the state covers the rest.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just have one question. Is this the project where MINDOT is going to complete that sidewalk all the way down to the industrial park?
I believe so, yes, Mr. Chair.
I believe so. If Mr. Sandy can answer if it's specifically not all the way to where Mr. Johnson?
But the sidewalk we were going to build and they asked us to put off. That is included in this project, it hasn't been dropped?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Administrator Bergman, please call the roll.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Stengline.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
O'Day.
Yes.
Stunick.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
And Bevins.
Yes.
All right, next item. Next item will be the approval of plans for and specifications for the authorization of bidding for improvement 19-02 Cayuna Lake State Trail Northern Pacific Center segment. Motion coming out of the committee was to approve the plans and specifications as presented and authorize bidding for improvement 19-02 with an anticipated bid opening date of March 29th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. This is all contingent on approval of the plans of approval of the plans by the Minnesota DNR, and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion by Chairman O'Day, second by Mr. Pritchett. Any discussion? Mr. O'Day?
This is the portion of the connecting trail for Cayuna State Trail coming into town through the land currently occupied by the NP Center. We've had a couple closed sessions on this. Part of this will be funded by DNR fund money, but the city's portion, in the end, after Mr. Higgins' contributions in kind is $292,447 or so.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries, please proceed, thank you.
Third item is to do with the seal coating projects for 2022. Motion coming out of committee is to approve the plans and specifications as presented and authorizing the bidding of improvement 22-01 with an anticipated bid opening of March 18th, 2022 at 10:00 a.m. Central Time.
Second.
We have a motion by O'Day, a second by Erickson. Any discussion?
This is our this is our seal coating for the year. We budget $150,000 a year to maintain our streets, and this bid came in just below $150,000. So hopefully it stays there.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries, please proceed.
Yeah, the fourth item is the consideration of proposed Section 320 Amendment language change. This was something we had a workshop about a month ago regarding code enforcement, and it was directed to send it back to SPW. Mr. Chansky and the planning or the Community Development Department came up with some recommendations, redlined the specific Section 320. We had a good discussion on it, and we can discuss that if you guys want to. But basically, we didn't motion on this. We sent it back. There were concerns with differences in how long it takes to cite certain offenses, what the penalties will be if it gets sent back to SPW for a final say decision or if it's coming into council after that as a recommendation to council. So what we directed Mr. Chansky to do is come back in two weeks with a rewritten Section 320, and that will come through as a motion to council, hopefully next time.
Perfect. Any discussion or questions of what's going to happen with this? Okay, thank you, please proceed.
All right, yeah, the last item on SPW tonight was the approval of a streetlights policy. So this is something Mr. Sandy and us, we have been working on for quite a few months now, and hopefully we can get this set here before we start these bids.
Light at the end of the tunnel?
There's light at the end of the tunnel.
Ooh.
Ooh.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to repeat Pritchett again.
Dave, do you need a part-time job? Something to do to fill your time?
So, motion coming through committee was to recommend the approval of streetlights policy with options 1A and 2A selected as lighting for commercial and residential applications respectively. And I'm not going to make that motion quite yet because I think there might be some questions just in case. Mr. Sandy is online, but what we came up with here in shopping around, we found some middle-of-the-road options. What you're looking at there would be the the main corridor, highway, trunk highways, the 30-foot tall poles. This would be the decorative lighting for that. And I believe, Paul, the top one, correct? Not the one that looks like a bug zapper on the bottom?
Oh, horn.
Because otherwise, I'm not going to.
I think it's your choice, but if that's the direction of the council, yes, we can select that.
Double the bug zapper.
Those are both an option.
Okay. And then there was another one for residential, and there it is, the Breckenridge. They're going to rename it the Brainerd.
Brainerd Ridge.
So those were the two that we found. Compared to the options we had before that we'd picked out, I think the main trunk option was more closer to $1,500 for the light, and this one is about $700. The residential option is about 200. There's our options before. You can see the fixture costs. Those are the differences. The pole cost will be staying the same, we're just changing the pole from gray to black. Mast arms won't change. Fixer costs is where you're going to find that change. When you look at the total cost, if you go from our existing on the top residential option to the bottom option 2A, which we motioned for, goes from $1377 per light to $1,644. And then going for the commercial option, you're going from the existing $2,659 to $3,068. So the cost increase is actually fairly minimal. And if anybody has any questions now for Mr. Sandy before I make a motion?
I have one. If I announce. Normally, I like to see the motion, but that's okay. Mr. Sandy, when you change something like lights in a way that you're not changing them all at one time, do you buy or does PUC? Who buys them? And do we stock 500 of them, 1,000 of them? And who pays for them until we put them up? And then what happens when they become discontinued or halfway through? Like everything, or COVID, or it's not available because of coronavirus, like we hear every day? How does that work?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so I can answer both of those, I think, to the best of my ability. So PUC does cover the upfront cost of all their stock and fixtures. How they charge us, there's a formula they use that basically, over the life of the light, covers the capital cost and the long-term lighting and maintenance of the poles. So a couple meetings back, we showed you a spreadsheet on how that's calculated. If you go to, Sean, the next sheet, we did a couple of examples of what it would cost to replace lights as part of capital projects. And that's the amount the city pays comes out of our monthly bill to BPU. We don't pay for the upfront cost of the lights, BPU does, and then they charge us back over time, over the life of the light. Or what would be the anticipated life of the light? I'm not sure about what they keep in stock. What I do know is they have maybe 10 to 12 current of the gray poles and random fixtures sitting back at their shop. That's the last time I heard.
Thank you. And one more comment. I mean, I'd love to change those plastic poles too, but this is certainly a step in the right direction. I loved the rock ones, I thought they were cool. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Johnson?
Just one comment that jumped out at me. We're looking at this, Mr. President. If we have 1,499 lights, I think we should look at adding one light somewhere in the city.
There you are, ruining the budget. Put it on the budget discussion for next fall. Do you want it in your yard?
I've got one.
All right, anything else, Mr. Chair?
I will make that motion. I just want to add too that there's a lot more to this lights policy having to do with spacing and different standards, other than just what we're focusing on today is the decorative lighting, but we're passing the entire policy, which is going to be helpful. I'm motioning to recommend the approval of the streetlight policy with options 1A and 2A selected as lighting for commercial and residential applications respectively.
Second.
We have a motion by Chairman O'Day, second by Pritchett. Any discussions on the motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, with one thing?
Yes, Public Works Director Sandy.
Yeah, there was some kind of, I don't know if the decision needs to be made tonight on whether we start replacing these with capital projects or not, but that was a brief discussion we had at the SPW meeting, whether we, you know, select corridors to start implementing this or we just start implementing this each year with our capital projects. That's, you know, a question that can come down maybe at the next meeting, but I leave it up to you guys to give us direction on that.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Chairman O'Day?
It was my understanding that we were motioning towards replacing lights as we did streets projects, but we also have the option of just maintaining the same lights and replacing them as lights break, but then we would just have a hodgepodge of different lights.
But, okay, I like the motion as it is. I have something on staging, but I think that should be a separate discussion, and I'd like it to go to PNF.
Okay.
If that's all right, because that's really about the money. Okay, I mean, if we had.
We can handle it.
Yeah, I think you can. Does that seem acceptable?
As long as they can't pick the lights, that's fine, yeah.
No, 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 this motion's going to. Mayor Bedeau has a comment on the motion.
So my only concern with that.
Me?
My only concern with this is about the implementation. I really appreciate the idea of looking at corridors and looking at 210 and specific roads that we're redoing, but my concern is we're currently talking about planning and zoning, and I'm hearing a lot of talk about tiers of communities, you know, and if you live in the bronze community, or God forbid, the zinc community, are you going to get these new lights? Are you going to be last on? Is this going to be a scenario where, since we're putting a gold star on certain areas, that they are the ones getting these lights? That's my concern, and I want to make sure that that's not the case.
Thank you for your comments. All right, any other comments on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Can we move the financial aspect of staging to PNF then in two weeks?
Love to do that.
See what's best. It appears, SPW, just to confirm, appears from the conversation I heard to not want to buy them all at one time, but to kind of do them as.
Yes.
As, okay, that's kind of what I thought. But it would be good to come back and have an actual direction for staff. All right, anything else, Chairman O'Day?
End of report.
Thank you very much. Next up is item eight. Item 8A, Unfinished Business, is the consideration of supportive housing village PUD general concept plan resubmital. Now, I know we've had this recently, and I think we made a motion on it. I'm not sure what changed, but we're going to let Mr. Erickson have a moment to tell us what the issue is. Our chairman, Mr. Duval of P&amp;Z, is here, and he's available if he'd like. But we'll start with you, Ted. What are we doing here?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, as you mentioned, so this came through. This PUD application came to the Planning Commission first on January 19th. The commission had several questions, several concerns. With that, they did pass it on through the PUD process to council with the hopes that the applicant would address some of those questions. Council also had several questions. As you mentioned, we saw that on February 7th, denying the application. The applicant resubmitted the PUD to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission saw it again at their meeting on the 16th of February. To the applicant's credit, they did answer most, if not all, of the questions. However, unfortunately, I believe the concerns still remain from Planning Commission. Several of the concerns that came up initially, as well as those concerns that remained, were the timeframe for the project, the phasing, the density, certain questions about the operation, particularly the one thing that stood out to me was the month-to-month lease. Other concerns about just simply the viability of the project, and then particularly the financing, how much financing they had secured for this project. That's kind of a list. There was even other concerns, but that's kind of the backdrop, Mr. President. There is a motion, and I don't know if you want me to, I can make that motion now or you want me to discuss?
Hang on just one second in case Mr. Duval wants to speak. Anything you'd like to add? Yes or no?
No.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. O'Day?
This is for Mr. Chansky. What is the minimum housing size allowed in the city limits of Brainerd?
Under the current code, it's 750 square feet. However, with a planned unit development, you can go smaller. It's kind of part of the, what a planned unit development allows you to do is kind of go outside of the ordinance in certain areas.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Anything else, Mr. O'Day?
I guess, I mean, I have a lot to say on it, I guess, but I don't want to expand on it. A planned unit development, is there a specific zone for a planned unit development or can they just go anywhere?
In theory, they can go anywhere. However, that being said, a planned unit development is still subject to the uses allowed in what we call the base district. So if a district is a residential district, you can't put a commercial planned unit development there. It still has to be a residential planned unit development.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. O'Day?
That's good.
Okay, we don't have a motion. Is there any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, so the request is the request by the applicant is for us to offer our conceptual support, correct, Mr. Chansky? So that's what the applicant, and it's a resubmital, so we have to answer it again.
Correct.
Okay? Understand what that is? We can't just write on the last one where we declined it. And generally, you have to state why. Yes?
Correct.
Okay, just so you all know. Any other questions? Anybody care to? And planning and zoning has already declined this for the mention, for what Mr. Erickson already said. Okay?
I'm ready with.
Yeah, Mr. Erickson, you're a P&amp;Z guy, let it go.
So I would motion to agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation to not support the proposed planned unit development.
Okay, second. Perfect. Mr. Erickson, can you give us the reasoning why again, for the record?
Yeah, so there was concerns about the, the timeframe, the phasing, uh, some questions about the operation, the viability of the project, the financing, and particularly the density as well. The underlying density being R three and R two.
Thank you. So, we have a motion to uphold the recommendation from planning commission from Erickson, second by Stunich. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. O'Day?
I would encourage anybody to just look these up. I know there's a lot of pretty pictures painted for a lot of things that are brought to, whether it's planning commission or council or whatever. In the real world, if you look at these tiny home, homeless shelter communities, they look like small prison camps in your city. It's a terrible look. When I watched this for the second time, I now find out there's no real plan for maintenance. We just hope that the people living here take care of it. And if you look around town in different areas where people don't take care of it, it's where they're renting, especially if it's month-to-month. Within five years, if it's, if it's brought to be the way it's proposed right now, this is a garbage patch, to say it nicely. And I don't, I don't know if we're, if, if it's even worthwhile to keep wasting time having this come back. I see the, I see the, the reasoning for it, and I, I know the humanitarian reasons behind it, but I don't think it's in a good spot because of visibility reasons, and I think there are better areas more suited for it. And I mentioned it before, very close to areas that are having trouble finding people to work there. And I'm just gonna let rest at that.
Thank you, Chairman O'Day, speaking in favor of the motion. Ted Erickson?
Uh, speaking favor of the motion as well, um, just for the reasons I had listed previously, but I, I too will speak in favor of the motion, um, to not support the proposed planned unit development.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment. This is the second time it's come before us. This is the second time we voted no. It doesn't need to come before us again. It's done.
Thank you. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President, and, and I, I would just like to add, I, I, I support the motion. I like what the planning, the, the work the planning and zoning commission put in on this. But I would just like to point out to staff that I don't think this fits the planned unit development of our current zoning code. That has six points that you need to meet. One is matches the comprehensive plan. This isn't in the comp plan. Two is to allow for a mixture of residential units. This isn't a mixer as much as a bunch of the same. Three is to ensure concentration of open space and the preservation of natural resources. This is chopping down a forest and building one, two, three, four, five, six parking lots on the banks of the Mississippi River. That's not preserving natural resources. Facilitate the economical provisions of streets and public utilities. Having, what is it, thirty-five housing units all spread all about isn't economical when you could build fourplexes, or sixplexes, or eightplexes. That only requires one line going to it. That would be much more economical use of public utilities. So, I don't think this even is a planned unit development, but that's just my thoughts on that.
Chairman Johnson, anybody else? Anybody else? Last call, and a reminder, if you vote in favor of the motion, you're supporting the planning commission's recommendation to not support the proposed PUD. Having heard all the discussion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, that motion carries. Next up is eight B, the consideration of revised parking commission recommendations. And, hang on one second here. I see we have, we have dueling presenters. I'm gonna see who wants to present first, but you both can speak. Mr. Jaeger, anything you wish to add to what's in our packet?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm here, uh, just to answer any questions, so I'm gonna defer to Mr. Chansky.
Mr. Chansky, anything you'd like to add to what's in our packet?
Uh, nothing to add that's in the packet. I guess I just, for Mr. Chair, if you want me to go through the, them individually again, or just cover over, uh, what the changes are, or if you just have any, go on, jump straight into questions, I'll leave that kind of decision up to you.
Why don't you hit the highlights of the changes?
Okay, hit the highlights of the changes. Absolutely, Mr. Chair. So, after, um, the, this going before the council in December twenty-first, and hearing comment from the public, um, you sent it back to the parking commission again, requesting them to reconsider their numbers, as well as remove the parking meter recommendation. So, the parking commission reconvened on the twentieth and the tenth, January twentieth, February tenth, and their main changes are three. Uh, the first is to adjust the lease parking rates to forty dollars per month for the Burlington Northern Alley and City Hall lots. Originally, in the original recommendation, those were fifty, while keeping the Maple Lot at its original proposed twenty-five dollars. Main reasoning behind that is if you look at the revised parking plan, especially as we punched in now the twenty-twenty-two numbers, knowing what last year's, um, snow removal and other capital costs were, um, under the current rates, we would be anticipating a net rev, a negative revenue of six thousand, roughly six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. So, the parking fund would be about sixty-six hundred dollars in the hole as things sit now. Um, by increasing the proposed rates, the parking fund would have an anticipated net revenue of approximately fifteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. That is over the course of a full year. Obviously, if the council were to adopt this this year, we wouldn't get a full year, so it wouldn't be that number, and also, there is that expectation that the parking fund is currently in a deficit, so we'd have to make up the deficit before any true net revenue, um, would be happening in twenty-twenty-two if this is adopted. Uh, the next major recommendation, uh, again, goes to number two, revising number, recommendation number two, which is the enforcement recommendation. Uh, the parking commission heard you removed the meters. However, they did feel that enforcement is a key component to this entire recommend, set of recommendations. Um, so, uh, they have recommended that the council, um, make the following enforcement measures. Um, so you'd be increasing from two to, two hours to three hours, the downtown, the on-street parking and the lot parking, um, in the core downtown, so it'd be in front of Maple, uh, South Sixth Street and South Eighth Street, um, adjusting the, the enforcement period from eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday, to seven AM to five PM Monday through Friday, so adding an hour in the morning of enforcement period. Direct the police department to conduct strict and consistent enforcement during the enforcement period. On, and in the justifications that mean, that also includes, when we're talking about strict, it means they are down there, they are at six o'clock, they're at, down there at seven, and they are there every three hours, and it also includes, uh, removing any grace periods. So, if you are there at, if your tires are marked at seven, and it's ten oh one, it's, it's a ticket. Um, to eliminate the business validation policy, uh, mainly because that, um, in the past has been abused. The police department has worked to address it, and in the last year, uh, Chief Best let me know, they only actually had one person even try to use it, so it's not even necessarily being used, so they recommend just eliminating the business validation policy. And then finally, update all the signage to reflect these time changes, and install additional signage to ensure, ensure clear communication of parking restrictions. Um, those are the main two changes. There's some minor changes on recommendation three regarding, uh, the net revenue generated by the lease parking to go, um, to be pumped back into downtown programming. We just deleted, it was originally lease parking spots and meters, no meters. We just removed the meters, so it's now just net revenue generated by lease parking spots. Um, recommendation four is still, is as-is. Recommendation five is as-is. Uh, recommendation six is as-is. Recommendation seven is as-is. Recommendation eight, we just added some additional language emphasizing the education, really working to educate, um, downtown property owners, business owners, tenants, patrons, um, of what the recommendations that the council implements are and why they are being implemented. The final change, um, is kind of in the closing section of the recommendations, is currently the parking commission is an ad hoc committee. Per your policy that you adopted last year, um, ad hoc committees, they're established to, to, uh, for a specific time to address a specific issue. After that issue has been addressed, the council will either reassign them a new task or disband them. Um, the parking commission sees that a lot of the recommendations, they need to be reevaluated and modified if necessary regularly. So, a year from now, we need to see, you know, are these recommendations working? Do they need to be reevaluated? The fee structure that should be evaluated, um, they recommend it every November to see if any changes need to be taken into effect for the following year, um, based off of where the parking fund is at. So, with that, they are requesting that the city council reconstitute the parking commission from an ad hoc committee to a standing committee, um, that would be meet at least bi-annually, so at least twice a year, again, to review recommendations, see where things are go, how, where they're at. Um, and then more frequently as needed, if there are other issues that need to be addressed. And with that, they would recommend that the initial committee be made up of the current five members of the parking commission, um, just for that first term to ensure continuity of these recommendations, and those are the main changes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chansky. Um, before I turn it over to questions, and I'm sure there might be some, I want to just give Chief Bestall a forewarning that I'm gonna ask you when we're done with question and answer what your thoughts are on the enforcement part of this. You don't, don't have to answer it now, just, but I want you, just to give you a heads up, because that's, I think, a big question, right? All right, so Mr. Chansky just went through all the changes, including putting this committee from an ad hoc to a standing status. Uh, any questions on the recommended changes out of the parking commission? Maybe not?
Any, any questions, you said?
Yes.
Sorry, I've, yeah, I've done all questions.
I thought maybe somebody would have something, and, and Mr. Jaeger, the planning, the parking commission chairman, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Is here, uh, to have field questions, as well as Mr. Chansky. We'll leave enforcement for a moment, because then Chief Bestall can give us that. Any, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I still may touch on enforcement.
I understand. It's okay.
Recommendation one. I like it. Let's do it. I, I think...
Can I just sit back down?
I, I think you're, I think, no, but I, I, and you talked about it when we had that workshop. You increase the rates. As long as they're full, you increase the rates until you're at a, at the correct market rate, until you find the market rate. I have a lot of questions about enforcement. I won't ask them now, but it's, you know, how much is it gonna cost? If we're really just doing, stopping there at seven in the morning, ten in the morning, one in the afternoon, and four in the afternoon, I have an idea on how I could park there for probably eight hours a day without anybody ever knowing. But, uh, we'll get to that when we asked, ask, uh, the chief, the ninety percent of net revenue generated, are we gonna pay back the capital projects fund for resurfacing all of the lots last year or not, Mr. President?
I, I can't answer that.
I'm not sure that I, um, if you're looking, everyone's looking at me, but I'm not sure...
The recommendation is to get two hundred thousand dollars back to the capital fund first, or if we're just gonna forget that happened.
Uh, well, I think that, uh, I, obviously, the EDA is a, at a participant in this conversation, but, uh, uh, we're coming forward with the deficit, and, um, we would like to, uh, like to do the best that we can with, uh, with the money, but, uh, and I think that's a greater conversation of where, where this money should come from or go, once we get it. So, I, I have a great non-answer for you there. I don't know.
I suspect we'll be spending on further maintenance upcoming.
Um, I think there's a strong argument for that, yes.
Rather than, I'm just guessing.
I'm just wondering, because we spent a lot of money on the parking lots last year, and we're just pretending we didn't.
Okay, Connie, can you, you've got your hand...
It was not discussed at the parking commission to repay those funds. I think that, you know, the parking fund was finally defined at what it should be used for. It had been used for other city parking lots that should have been paid for the capital fund, but the parking commission did not address those funds, and it was not discussed whether or not it would be repaid.
Thank you.
Okay, send it back.
And then, in general, I, let's, I, I'm thinking maybe we should send it back, change recommendation two to maybe add parking meters into the plan, but that's just my thoughts on it. I kid. I, I have all the questions about the enforcement and the costs of the enforcement, and the timing of the enforcement, and a lot of questions about that, but if the, if the police chief is gonna talk, I'll just wait on that. Otherwise, I, I like these rec...
A little advance warning, but not much.
I like, I like these recommendations, but I will say, Kevin, was it a year ago, a year, it was two years ago that we, we formed this commission, and we said, what is parking going to look like in ten years, in twenty? Well, you, you just gave us what parking's gonna look like in next year, instead of in ten years, right?
Yeah, absolutely, a hundred percent agree. Uh, I think, uh, all of the people, all the people who join this commission say, ah, you know, a few months, boom, bing, bang, we'll be out of there. Well, a couple of recommendations, boom, we'll be out of there. Uh, and as we started working on this, more and more layers, uh, began to reveal themselves of what is, needs to be looked at, uh, how the public re, responds to this, uh, the financial side of it. What should the bus, what should the city of Brainerd be in the business of? What should they not be in the business of? What do the, uh, what do the tenants think? What do the landlords think? What do the business owners think? And, uh, through a series of, uh, many, many meetings, as well as a town hall style meeting, we just got, we just got tons and tons of feedback that all, we, we felt all, uh, adds to the dynamics of what appears to be a very simple question, which is in fact not a simple question at all. So, that's also part of the, uh, the mindset of, of keeping or, or continuing us, uh, into a planning commission, uh, in that we believe that a true parking commission should be, uh, should be responding fluidly to what's happening in the marketplace, as well as, uh, community feedback on a much more regular basis. So, uh, that's really the mindset here. We, we think the parking commission, uh, has work to do, uh, in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you. The final question, Mr. President, as the EDA chair, the recommendation here is to almost be a standing committee under the EDA, work with the EDA, but the EDA is just an advisory committee to the council, so what you're proposing is the planning commission meet, give a recommendation to the EDA that they may change, or modify, or take, or like, or not like, and then they'll recommend it to the council. Um, and just three layers of bureaucratic city meetings, and I see you're gonna be on the EDA here in about twenty minutes. You're, you're fine with that?
Well, I was promised refreshments, so, uh, that was...
Now, we need two pots. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, well, as, as, if I'm reading that correctly, I could technically be the liaison between all three, but, well, uh, two of the three anyways, but, uh, um, I think that, uh, the parking commission sees value for sure in working with the EDA on, uh, the dispersal, the, the fund, the, the aspect of the funds, the money and moving forward. Uh, so, uh, we feel like the EDA is the right body to, uh, to help out with, uh, where this money goes. If there is money.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Chansky or Parking Commission Chairman Jaeger? Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, chief, now, give us the, your two minutes on how enfor, how enforceable is this change? Is it doable? And then we'll ask, there might be a few questions for you as well, sounds like.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I, I think that one of the hardest, um, jobs in my career thus far is parking. Um, and it's, and the reason being is, I'm not for parking meters, I'm not against them. What they are, they take out a human element. And so, your little red flag comes up, you pay your ticket and you move on. How our system is, is that everybody has an excuse, and their excuse is, is why they had to park, why they were late. Whatever the circumstances, I've probably heard them all. We have copies of all the appeal forms. Um, what's problematic is, is a lot of times, is people come and visit downtown Brainerd, and they get a parking ticket. Our parking ticket appeal form has to be either mailed in, or most of the time presented to the police department, and that's eight to five, Monday through Friday. And now, we're taking a person who's visiting our downtown Brainerd and putting them over the, uh, to the police department, filling out a, a form, and at some point in time, we get ahold of them, and they say something like this, I will never come back to Brainerd because of X, Y, Z. Um, that's just for an example. So, when we started looking at what's fair, what's not fair. The fifteen-minute parking downtown Brainerd in front of Cocoa Moon, very problematic. Should it be sixteen minutes? Should it be twenty minutes? I was in there, they were super busy, I couldn't, my, couldn't get my coffee out quick enough, and you gave me a ticket. The thirty-minute parking, the two-hour parking, there's so many excuses down there, and the, the, the resources it takes for staff to, to process all that, and for the deputy chief, for the chief, to have a fifty-minute conversation, uh, whether we, um, accept the appeal or, or we deny it. And so, you can see the time and resources for a twenty-five-dollar ticket. Um, I support the lease parking. I wish we had more of it, because of, you know, if you're renting for forty dollars an hour, or for forty dollars a month, um, that makes sense to me. Instead of one ticket, you always have a place to go. So, this has been going on for years and years and years. So, can we enforce the seven to five? Can we enforce the eight to six? The answer is yes. Um, well, I'm not gonna give up our strategies. It's not a seven o'clock, and a ten o'clock, and a one o'clock, and a three o'clock. We'll move it around. We have strategies, because they know who are CSOs, and as soon as we move, the strategy that Mr. Johnson said is that as soon as a CSO goes by, then you go out and move your car around the block, you get rid of the chalk, and then I, I'm gonna park for free. So, we have to play a game at times, and so, we, 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 we're creative with making sure we hold people accountable, but only up so, how many, how many, uh, how long do you want us to spend in downtown Brainerd? Because the rest of them, we wrote probably seventy-five to a hundred tickets today. Um, we can't focus just in the downtown district, so, uh, being realistic, but Mr. Jaeger pointed out is, it, kind of the concept was, is, let's go, let's be consistent, let's be fair. This is, you know, what we're gonna, you know, three hours, it's three hours and one minute, and we're gonna give tickets, and we're not gonna have any appeals, and we're just gonna move forward for consistency, get rid of the business validation. Um, the end-all is the whole council, and so, you probably, I can't remember the last time somebody came here with an appeal, um, to discuss it with the council, with trying to take care of it, uh, on, on our end, um, and a lot of upset people. So, those are some of the struggles. Can we enforce it? The answer is yes, Mr. President, um, and we'll use some strategies to enforce that. Um, just more so when the appeal comes through, and there's, hopefully not, Mr. Jaeger and I, we, we figured there'd be ten people up here at one point in time wanting to talk to council, saying, you know, the police department are really mean people, and, you know, we have all these tickets out there, but, uh, we believe if we do it and do it right, and be consistent with it, uh, we can work through it.
Thank you, chief. All right, let's go down here, Mr. O'Day.
I just had a, a question I thought of as you're speaking of this. In order to spend more di, more time downtown, can you think of any areas nearby or throughout the rest of the town that maybe have two-hour parking, or some type of enforced parking that are irrelevant, or a, a time suck? I, I think of right next to the YMCA, there's two-hour parking. I'm sure there's other areas like that, that, what if we just got rid of some other two-hour parking areas that you guys need to patrol? And then you're free to spend more time downtown in enforcing a three-hour parking. It's not part of this recommendation, but it could be added on.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. I mean, if you, if this is our focus, I believe with, in Mr. Jaeger, what he says, if, if we, we... we, we set a precedent and we do what we need to do, um, there's a learning curve and, you know, once we get out there, we talk about the education, um, and the new signs. A lot of the, the signs, they're up, they're down, they're, they're faded green. Can we do some better signage? I talked to Mr. Sandy about, hey, can we put more signs down there? And, and his opinion is we can't put a sign down there, you know, four on each block. That's not reasonable, or ten on, you know? And a lot of times people say, well, I didn't know what kind of, uh, regulations were in your city and, and all those type of things. So, I think education is probably just as much as notification. There's a, you know, this is where it's at. But I agree, we've talked numerous times, if you block, if you walk one block or two blocks, you're out of this area. Um, education, you know, if you're willing to walk a block. And what we found is, it's not that there's not enough parking spots. We've done the analysis time and time again. There's parking spots all over downtown, but there's not parking spots right where you want to go, but if you walked a block, you would be just fine. So, that's kind of, you know, some of the issues that we, we have, because we don't, there are parking spots, there are. It's just that you have to walk to get to where your destination is.
Thank you, Chief. Anything else, Mr. Orde?
I'm just going to be more specific, I guess, one more, one more comment, just, if you can think of areas that we can get rid of any two-hour parking. I, I think it would be wise for you to come back with, with a list and, and we can just get rid of those signs, take it away.
We, we spent a lot of time at the high school with keeping people safe with a 15-hour minute, with a 15-minute parking down there. I think once that project is done, um, that will help out a ton. We have a lot of time to keep, uh, those areas clean as well. Um, I, I think that, I think what the direction is, is that it's very easy for us to say, you know, uh, we're going to have a routine, we won't tell the public what it is, but we will come up with a strategy and, um, it'll help very much as if we're looking at getting a summer intern, um, is to have that a project for that intern. And like Mr. Jaeger had said, is that maybe it's this summer that we really go, this is what we're going to do and kind of set the precedent.
Thank you. Mr. Erickson?
Um, I, I have a comment, not a question. Are you looking for just questions now?
You know, I'm going to say do whatever you want, but we're going to try and wrap this parking workshop up and get to a motion, okay?
Very quickly then, thank you, Mr. President. So, as I was reviewing these, these eight recommendations, I am, I like one, three, four, six, and eight. I would be opposed to two. I could include five and seven. I don't love five and seven, but, so, I could, I could support all these except number two. I had concerns over the staff, um, resources and time that the enforcement would take. Um, so, that's all.
Thank you. And it will be your decision if you choose to vote against it on the sole basis of number two. However, remember that Mr. Jaeger has also asked that this become a standing committee, right? So, there's going to be some of this as you go. Doesn't mean we can't take this apart in the next 14 hours and still not come up with a 100% answer, but likely there's going to be a need for this through, throughout time. It's been an issue since I've been on the council, which is a long time. Okay, anybody down here? Hearing none. Mr. Bedeau.
I just have two comments.
Well, keep it under an hour.
One, I, I, I agree with Mike. What he's, what Mike is trying to say is, once they finish that parking lot by the high school, quit doing two-hour over there. Chop that all up, let people park on the street, who cares? Uh, my second comment is just, uh, essentially about the structure of this, if it becomes a longstanding committee. I just want to make sure that we, as a council, are making clear direction as to who is involved in the conversation with this. Because if the money's going to the EDA, then the EDA really needs to be involved in the conversation about what the pricing of these lots should be. I think that's an EDA question, then, if that's where the money is going. And I just want to make sure that if we're creating this committee, that there is a clear dichotomy of where the direction goes and, and what the, the connection and who's in, having the dialogue is. Because as we've learned with these committees, is that there's a lot of talking and then there's a lot of back and forth and that there's a lot of questions being asked. And if it's only going to meet two times a year, we should probably have those clear and in place before they meet so that they're not meeting five times to meet one time every six months.
We'll, we'll trust Mr. Jaeger can handle that. So far, so good. We can continue talking about this forever, but let's, let's do that after we adjourn. Jennifer will get somebody a key and you guys can stay here, but let's make a decision on what we have before us. Is that all right? Does that seem fair? We can eliminate part of it. I'm not going to take any more comments. We can eliminate part of it, we can accept it all in its entirety, we can deny the whole thing and send it back to the Parking Commission. Somebody please make a motion.
I have a motion, Mr. President.
Mr. Johnson.
All right, so I will move to accept all the Parking Commission's recommendations and direct staff to begin the necessary processes to implement them, including reconstituting the Parking Commission as a standing committee with the understanding that they will be responsive to change in the future. And I so move.
Motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett. Now we get to do this again. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I, I support the motion. I support, generally support the ideas. Still a lot of questions on how two is actually going to look. Not sure if I like five either, like Tad, but seven is just like aesthetic improvements and benches and bike racks. How do you, not like that.
Funny.
Anyway, anyway, I, I'm moving all of the commissions or all of the recommendations and form them as a commission that they'll come back to us and report to us twice a year.
Thank you. Me too. Anybody else?
I'll just say number seven. I felt it was just simply redundant. The comp plan has that language in it, but like I said, I can live with seven, no problem.
Now it's in there twice. Okay, we don't generally do anything else redundant, why would we do this? Any other discussion? Hearing none. This is a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you and thank you again, Mr. Jaeger and the Parking Commission. We'll expect all kinds of updates for at least the first couple of years. Okay. Next up is C, committee recommendations. I don't know if you're going to get approved for anything after this.
That's right.
Recommendation by Mayor Bedeau for, go ahead, Mayor Bedeau, make the announcement.
Thank you. So, uh- Every time, every time, every time.
You're going to be out measuring snow.
Exactly.
You know what? Well, that's going to be part of my report. My yardstick's too small now.
The human gnome.
Unbelievable.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Bedeau.
Okay, so, as everyone is aware and as we will talk in the very next item, we are always looking for committee members, and I have a recommendation of one individual for two committees. You may know this individual. The main reason why I'm recommending him is because I believe that these committees need a better quality of dress, and this man will come at a high quality of dress.
Hey now.
So, so, uh, recommendation from myself, uh, is that, uh, we accept, uh, one Kevin Jaeger to both the HRA and EDA, and I want to just make this one, uh, comment that, uh, this is an individual that continually keeps stepping up and, uh, wants to volunteer his time to be a part of the city and that, uh, continually does the homework that is involved with this, so I, uh, highly recommend, uh, these positions.
Thank you. Is there a motion to, uh, what was that, a motion, Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, we got a motion by Johnson, second by Pritchett, to approve the mayor's recommendations. Any comments?
Approving him for all of the mayor's recommendations, right?
No, we're filling everything with him.
That's the two longest terms.
Yes, just the two. Hearing no legitimate comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. Item D is a call for applicants. Mr. Mayor?
Welcome back. Uh, so, just so we're aware, you, you don't have to show up in a suit for all of these committees, but it is recommended. Uh, the following, uh, uh, committees, uh, have, uh, seats available on them. We talk about this all the time. This is where you get things done in the city, and, uh, as you can see, we are whittling away at this list. We are chopping it down, mostly with Mr. Jaeger, but we are chopping away at this list. So, the following positions are available, applications as always available at ci.branard.mn.us/boards/ We have the Cable TV Advisor Committee, two terms expiring 2022, one term expiring 2024. The Charter Commission, one term expiring 2022, one term expiring 2025. The Rental Dwelling License Board of Appeals, three terms expiring 2022. And the Economic Development Authority, one term expiring either the 22nd or the 26th, because the other is Kevin Jaeger, so.
Kevin's 26.
Kevin's 26. One, one term expiring 2022.
This is amazing.
You're welcome.
And as council president, I have one term on the Planning Commission to expire 2023, and on the ad hoc committee of water tower fundraising, there's two positions available. We will move on to item nine, which is public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. We usually like to have you keep it to three minutes, three to five. Um, anybody in the room that would like to speak on something that we are not currently discussing? Anybody at all? Mr. Strong, what do we got up there? And if you're online and you want to speak, you hit star three, and that will allow us to know that you're with us and that you want to speak. Then you hit star six and that'll unmute you. You leaving us, Kevin?
Oh heavens no, I love it here.
He's getting up to get a check, no.
Get the keys, we can stay late. Anybody at all, online or in the chambers that would like to speak during public forum? I see nobody, Sean, am I missing anybody? All right, we will close the public forum, we will head on to staff reports. Uh, let's start over here with, uh, HR Director Schubert. Nothing at all? Uh, Mr. Chansky?
Just one thing, Mr. President, you may have seen in the dispatch over the weekend, as well as, I think it was today, on our social media. We are holding an open house on the proposed zoning code tomorrow, so that is Wednesday, February 23rd. Uh, it'll be held in the Fire Department Training Room at 23 Laurel Street. It starts at 4:00 PM. Uh, so come on in and, and learn a little bit about the proposed zoning code, any, ask any questions, provide us any comments you have. And if you want to have a further discussion on the zoning code, the Planning Commission will be following, uh, the workshop immediately at 6:00, again, in the Fire Department Training Room at 20, at, uh, 23 Laurel Street, um, to have a full in-depth discussion and walkthrough of the proposed zoning code. So, open house at 4:00 PM and Planning Commission Workshop at 6:00 PM. Um, all are invited, as well as the City Council, to attend both of those.
Thank you. Uh, HR Director Sharpton here.
HRA.
What did I say?
I'm not Chris.
Drop the A.
No, I'm trying to speed things, I'm trying to speed things up.
And I'm messing that all up. Uh, just thank you to the mayor, thank you to the council for adopting or approving our, uh, HRA rep. That will now fill my board, which I have not had since I've been around. So, appreciate Mr. Jaeger for stepping up and, and you guys for getting that, uh, approved.
Thank you. Finance Director Hillman? Mr. Barrows, anything from the county?
Yeah.
You gotta come up to the microphone, because you don't have a microphone. But you're, you're always-
Give him a microphone, he's running for election again.
Campaign starts now.
I haven't announced yet, Kevin.
You have to announce it, you have to give us your name and your address, and I apologize, but we're online, so.
So, I only have one thing.
No, you have to give your name and address.
Steve Barrows, 12679 Nova Fur Drive.
Thank you.
Baxter, unfortunately for you guys. But I grew up in Brainerd, so there is a connection. But I just want to thank you, everyone, for the support for my run for the Sourcewell Board position. I was successful in that run, so I've now been, will be on that board for three years, assuming I win my reelection if I choose to run. Otherwise, it'll be a one-year term, but I appreciate any support that was thrown my way, so thank you very much. I always enjoy coming to your meetings. You guys bring a little humor, I like that, so that isn't quite so serious, but it is serious things that you folks do, so thank you very much for all you do.
And thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And thanks for supporting the City of Brainerd. IT Director, GIS Director, Sean Strong. Chief Bestel, anything you want, else you want to add?
I'm good.
All right. Administrator Bergman?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Um, Chief Bestel and I were on Community Focus on Valen- Valentine's Day. Um, this morning I did attend the BPU Commission meeting. They reviewed and approved the purchase agreement, uh, or the purchase of energy with AEP in concept. And then they, uh, two commissioners are on a crypto subcommittee and will work with BPU staff to finalize the agreement and then bring it back for ratification. And then the BPU Commission also reviewed the purchase power agreements with BCV Digital, also known as BND Power Solutions, and just for crypto, and will bring back those agreements for approval at a future meeting. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Online, we've got, uh, Public Works Director Sandy.
Want to give my hats off again to the street guys and the parks guys, uh, trying to get the streets and the rinks and everything opened up after a large snow event. Uh, they started work at 4:00 AM this morning. Uh, they ended up quitting around four, they'll be back on at 4:00 AM tomorrow morning, so, um, well, the, the parks guys will be in at seven, but, yeah, so, uh, large, large events, uh, multiple days, um, hard to kind of keep track of, you know, where you've been before and, and where you got to go back to, because a long event like that kind of really messes up your, your routes. So, I just want to give my hats off again to those guys.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, City Attorney Lengel?
Nothing for me, Mr. President, thank you.
All, all right. Yeah. Joe, can, can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so this question actually comes from our chairman of the Charter Commission, Jeff Chesok, and I'm not expecting an answer, but I want to ask it publicly, and maybe in two weeks you can return either personally or through Administrator Bergman. Uh, Jeff, as you recently know, we've done a lot of charter changes and, uh, including now we're doing some RFPs on the, uh, tax levies for various groups throughout the city. And the question is, when we changed the charter, is there provisions in there as we go out for RFPs to, to not disperse all the funds? Okay? We always assumed when the referendum originally took place, that we would, that the, that the referendum insisted by referendum, by law, by statute, that we give all that money away, the half mil at the time. But the question now is, we've changed the charter, and what if somebody doesn't apply on RFP day but does two months later? We will have given all the money away if we follow the way we've always done it. Do you understand the question, Mr. Lengel?
I do, Mr. President. Interesting question, yeah. I'll have to do some research on that and get back to the council.
Right, okay, thank you. I thought, I thought, Mr., I thought Chairman Chesok had a gr- just a great question. Okay, and you were done. And thank you, Mr. Lengel. Next up is the mayor, reports the honorable Mayor Bedeau.
Well, first of all, I just wanna thank you guys for coming to tonight's meeting. Uh, some of you may know that yesterday was President's Day. Uh, I myself, being the individual that I am, uh put my boots on, shoveled out my car and made his way to the City Council Chambers, Chambers, where I sat here by myself for quite a few minutes. I'd like to say just two minutes, but it was quite a few minutes before realizing our meeting is tomorrow. So I just wanna thank you guys for coming on time and for being here. Uh, I warmed my chair up yesterday. Uh, secondly, I just wanna say that uh a quick reminder to anyone that is out there, uh the St. Patrick's Day Celebration uh will be happening in downtown Brainerd on Saturday, March twelfth. Now, once again, we announced this at the last meeting, but I know people watch on YouTube, only five, but that's okay. To you out there listening and watching, uh it has come to our attention that Crosslake has made the horrible mistake of hosting their St. Patrick's Day after St. Patrick's Day, big no-no in the St. Patrick's Day community. Uh, they will be doing theirs on the following, which is the nineteenth. Six people currently watching. Oh, no, yep, that's how it works. You see my face and we shut her down. Anyways, if you are out there if you are out there and you are planning on uh being involved in St. Patrick's Day, we would love to have you. You can uh hitch your wagon to the back of your vehicle and make your way down to the wonderful city of Brainerd. We would love to have the largest parade that we've had in a long time because, as you know, we did not have a parade last year and we are super excited to once again celebrate all things green and consume a few adult beverages responsibly. And uh we wanna welcome all citizens, but especially those who like to uh participate in parades. Uh, you can contact uh myself at Brainerd Community Action if you are interested in doing so. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moving forward.
I I don't know how to after that. Council Committee, uh Council Member reports, uh Tad Erickson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So I took the Streets Department up on the uh invitation to ride along this morning on the plows. So a great experience. I'll reiterate what what Paul said.
He just wanted his street plowed out.
Three streetlights.
Yeah, I had the, I had the privilege to ride along on Kirby Truck It. Um, so good, good experience. And um, just like I said, reiterate what Paul said, hats off to the streets, guys. Um, I only lasted two and a half hours. Um, they're going all day, so.
It's about two hours.
Appreciate that. Um, just other things, Fire Advisory Board, uh Committee coming up on March third. And then the Northland Arboretum Board of Directors, um prior to that, on February twenty-fourth, I'll be in attendance at both of those. Of course, the Planning Commission Workshop as well, so.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Mr. Pritchett?
I I think we should make a resolution to just end winter, just now, just done, finished.
That's what they did in Baxter. Chairman Orde?
Uh, yeah, so uh next week, I think the EDA will meet again on the third. Uh, I think we we still have one contract. We still have one contract to uh finalize with Bladeak. I think all of our other RFPs have been uh finalized into contract. Uh, I wanna thank everybody for being patient with our plow drivers. We've had a lot of snow. Um, I haven't heard a lot of complaints yet. Uh, also, I was thinking about the parade. We had a really good float last year. We got first place in the Fourth of July Parade. I think we still have some of those props. It's a Fargo float. It's very fitting for that time of year. We can think about it. Just throwing it out there.
Saint Fargo.
Saint Fargo's Day. Um, and then I wanted to to remind everybody um how nice it was on Sunday and and how Mayor Bedeau last week, two weeks ago, asked for public challengers on Big Seb's sledding hill. So I thought, man, what a nice day to show my daughter how slow the mayor is actually on a sled. I texted him. He said, you wouldn't survive, meaning I would literally die. I said, what time? Nothing. Crickets. That's a win by forfeit. I am declaring myself the victor.
That's like overturning a football game.
I make a motion, he's a winner.
To the five people, four people now watching on on YouTube.
No rebuttal.
Uh, I followed that up with an emoji of someone exploding, as I said, four people. So by showing the emoji, uh or excuse me, not emoji, but the gif, if you will, the jif of someone exploding, I think I got my point across excellently well. And it was more about not embarrassing you in front of your daughter because she's a fine young lady who doesn't need to lose respect for her father.
Impossible. You still gotta show up.
I wanna go home.
End of report.
Take control of this operation.
I heard Community Action is not allowing our float back in. Bringing, we were bringing too, bringing too much to town. Tiffany Stangline, goodness peaches, can you bring us back in order?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stunek.
You know, I just wanna tell Mr. Sandy, when I volunteered to measure the snow, I never bargained that the snow would be deeper than I'm tall.
That's why we picked you. And you keep digging yourself out.
Kevin.
Chairman Johnson?
One thing, I just wanna give a tip of the cap to our Parks Department and the Public Works Department. Sunday was a beautiful day. Uh, my family went out skating at Bain Park, ice on the entire rink, speakers outside the building, music playing. The park is in great condition. Love it. When we were leaving, we drove by Big Seb, just curious. It was a nice day. There's probably fifteen, twenty people enjoying Big Seb, and that was such a a great idea to get it done, but somewhat minimal effort by our maintenance crews to get out there, clear a little, couple runs and and the people are using it and they love it. And it's just those low-betts projects that I hope we can continue to do in this city to make living in Brainerd as as fun as it can be.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson, and just um to let you know what's gonna, what's gonna happen next is we're going to ask to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point oh five subdivision three C three to develop offers for the purchase of property at five oh four Eleventh Street South, five oh one Ninth Street South, twelve oh two Laurel Street, one one two zero Norwood Street, one 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 four Norwood Street, one one zero eight Norwood Street, and one one zero two Norwood Street. Those are all for the Coyuna Trail Connection. But before we ask for that motion to adjourn to that closed session, when we return back and open, and you won't be able to see us if you're one of those four, we will be adjourning tonight's meeting to Wednesday's Planning and Zoning at five o'clock, Mr. Chansky, for the open house, six o'clock for the.
Four o'clock for the open house, six o'clock.
Four o'clock's the open house at the Fire Hall. So if you're interested in our planning and zoning, the council will be adjourning to that meeting on Wednesday uh at four o'clock, open house, six o'clock, Planning and Zoning meeting, as well as adjourning to the City Council Workshop for Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. That's on Monday, the twenty-eighth, here in Council Chambers at six PM. So we'll be adjourning to those meetings when we reconvene after closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
To move.
Second.
Motion by, motion by Pritchett, second by Stunek. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned to closed session.